We are going to go ahead and start. Good afternoon, good evening. This is the Arlington NAACP Candidate Forum for Arlington Independent School District Candidates, Board of Trustees Candidates. We'd like to welcome our attendees as well as our candidates. And thank all of the candidates for their courage, courage, energy, effort, and all of the time that they are putting in to running in order to serve this community. I am Elisa Simmons, the president. And so once again, thank you guys for being here. We are going to open up with prayer, and that is going to be led by Billy Wilson, our second vice president.
With our heads, please. Most high God, we come before you once again, thanking you for the many blessings that you have given us, our health, our strength, our daily bread, our protection even in times of trouble. We come before you, Father, seeking your guidance, seeking your wisdom as we seek to see what how you would lead us and how we would how we would pick those who would lead our children. Father, we ask you to bless us this evening. Our son, Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Billy. Okay, we will turn it over to the Political Action Committee, which is led by Damon Gardner. He and his committee have done a tremendous amount of work to put on the series of candidate forums over the last month and or this month and the subsequent month, upcoming month. So Damon, it is tossed to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam President, and welcome to the candidates. Thank you for participating in our first series of candidate forums we will have throughout this political season for the special election in May. And our first tonight, we're doing the Arlington School Board. And moderator for this evening will be Tia Cole, our Education Chair, and also member of our Executive Board of the Arlington NAACP. She is also a past member of the Ladder Alliance, and she's currently a professional of English at the Tarrant County College. In addition to teaching, she councils and serves on several committees. She's also launched her own development business, the Cole Lab, the C-O-L-Lab. She is also the immediate past president of the Professional Development at the... I forgot what the thing was. I told Tia to help me if I forget what part of it is. But Tia, I'm gonna go ahead and put it in your hands, and you can introduce the candidates. I believe everyone who's here now, and we can get started.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And yes, that is the Cole Lab, C-O-L-E, L-A-B. And I think you were referring to Bridge Fort Worth as the other position. But I am so excited and privileged and honored to serve you all as your moderator this evening. Thank you so much for giving us a little bit of your time, sharing your passion with us so that we can make informed decisions at the polls in a couple of months. So what we're gonna do is I'm gonna lay out a few of the housekeeping rules, and then we're gonna just jump right into the meat of this thing. So we do have the chat open. For all of those who are listening, if you have questions, please drop them in the chat. We do have someone monitoring the chat. That's Kim Jackson, and she will give those questions when we open up time for public questions. When it comes to you as candidates, you will have five minutes to introduce yourself and sort of lay the land of your platform at the beginning. And then we will move through our list of questions, and you will have two minutes. That's it. To answer the question, you will be muted at the two-minute mark. So please, please try to cover your thoughts in the two minutes because you will be muted regardless of where you are. We're not trying to offend you, but we definitely want to move through because as you know, it can sort of roll over and then other people roll over, and then now we're out of time. So we want to keep the time so that we can get all of the thoughts and ideas that you all have and really allow you time to share with us. Billy Wilson, if you can see him on your screen, he's the one watching the time. He's gonna put a check, if you can show them what that looks like, Billy, up in his box for when you have 30 seconds, and an X up in your box for when you have 15 seconds left. So green check for 30 seconds, red X for 15 seconds, and then mute at zero. All right. I think that pretty much covers it. Are there any questions? I'm a teacher. I gotta ask, right? Are there any questions before we get started? Awesome. All right. So I'm excited. So we'll start with, and I'm just gonna call random order. We'll start with your five minutes. So you have five minutes to kind of introduce us to you and share your passion and your platform. Okay? So I see Sarah McMorrow. If you would like to open up your camera or your mic and go forth.
All right. Good evening. And I do apologize if you hear any banging. The thunder is really loud outside my window. So yes, my name is Sarah McMorrow, and I am on the ballot for AISD Place One. And I grew up here mostly in Arlington, and I attended AISD schools, Foster Elementary, Gunn Junior High. I graduated from Bowie High School. And then I went to college in San Marcos. And as soon as I graduated college, I came right back home because I've always known since I was a young child, I've wanted to be a teacher. And not only that, I knew I wanted to come back home to teach here in AISD. So you know, for seven years, I taught at Lynn Hale Elementary in East Arlington. And those were seven of the best years of my life. During that time, I learned a lot. I was honored with Teacher of the Year for my campus. I was honored with the AWARE Award for second through fourth grade, which was wonderful. And then I was a teacher at Little Elementary, where my son is actually a first grader in West Arlington where we live now. And this past July, I actually got the opportunity to serve as a district-wide literacy coach in Mansfield ISD. So now I'm in classrooms every day directly supporting third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers, which it's very rewarding to be able to support teachers, especially during this time. And because now I'm employed in Mansfield, that's how I was able to put my name in the hat for Arlington School Board. And so, you know, why school board? Why am I running for office right now? I really truly want to serve our children here in the community in a greater capacity than I do now. And my own child is included. You know, we have almost 60,000 students here in Arlington schools. And I want to preserve the integrity of our public schools. I grew up here. My child attends school here. I taught here for 12 years of my life. And I truly care about the success of our district. Something that I would like to see, you know, I would like to get back to, of course, more normalcy like everyone else, right? But we have to do that safely. And I truly feel that I have just the background qualifications, the energy, the drive, and the heart to be able to serve. And you know, I really want to, you know, give our teachers more instructional time. That, you know, that leads to a lot of things like less district mandated assessments, you know, and I could get into different ideas that I have for that, but I'm trying to use my time effectively. I really want to strengthen the home and school connection, not just at a few schools and pockets around Arlington, but in all parts of our city. I served for a couple of years as a family engagement liaison, and we have a wonderful PACE department here in Arlington. And I would love to increase the capacity there so we can strengthen our connection between home and school. And I would love to retain our top-notch teachers and staff right here in Arlington so we can retain our children here in public schools. And that's me.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Next up, we'll go Ms. Polly Wharton.
And Tia, if I could make one quick suggestion, since we're doing the five minutes, I'll do a check at one minute and then 30 instead of 30 and 15. Does that make sense?
Tia, may I go ahead?
Yes, ma'am. Go for it.
Thank you very much. My name is Polly Walton, W-A-L-T-O-N. I am candidate for Place One on the ballot for that office. I am the incumbent for that office. I have been the trustee for the past six years. I feel like I'm uniquely qualified. Sarah, my opponent, and I have very similar backgrounds. We both come from strong education experience. I was a teacher, I've been a parent, and now I'm a grandparent with three of my grandchildren in the Arlington schools. I, over the years, have, especially this past one, which has been so interesting, have acquired some detailed knowledge of the issues and the challenges that are facing our district. It's been a really fast and furious year. I work well with my fellow trustees and with our superintendent, Dr. Marcelo Cavassos. I have not missed any board meetings in the past six years or have attended all my committee meetings that I am a part of also. I do my homework for every meeting before each committee meeting, and I'm prepared with questions for staff if that's necessary. I'm a good listener. I am retired. And when invited to attend community functions, I always do my best to attend. This is a great opportunity for me to listen to members of our community and share the messages that they give us with others. I attend workshops and seminars with great city schools and Texas Association of School Boards and others to stay up to date. Just attended one last month on equity that was excellent. Lastly, the district is faced with many difficult challenges in the next year as this pandemic has caused some significant disruption. I'm ready to get everyone back in school as normally but safely as we possibly can. I feel like we have as much left to do as we have already done as far as being in the realm of difficult times for everyone. I will tell you that I have the utmost respect for our schoolteachers and staff in our schools. They have done an incredible job over the past year doing what they knew they had to do for their students. And my hat is off to them. I'm so glad I was part of being able to give them a 4% salary increase in our last budget for this 2021 school year. Um, gosh, what a thunder. Oh, my goodness. I would appreciate your support from the NAACP and appreciate this opportunity to be with y'all tonight and answer your questions. So I will turn it back over to you, Tia. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Polly. Next up, we will have Ms. Melody Fowler.
Thank you, Ms. Tia. Well, I'm Melody Fowler. I'm a wife, a mother, a teacher, and a current board member. I'm in Place Two, and my son went to AISD from K through 12. So I know the district well. I've enjoyed serving as room mother for grades, gosh, kindergarten through six. I was grade rep. Then when he got to junior high, I served as PTA president at Young Junior High. And then when he went to Martin High School, I served as president there. So I love the PTAs, and I love the involvement that the parents have. I know that my son got a good education. He's at UTA. He's a junior this year, majoring in history. And so I feel like AISD did a great job of educating him. He's done very well in college. In fact, I think he's done better in college than he did in high school. But so and also, in addition to that, I've been a teacher for over 30 years, teaching English. I've taught everything from grade six through 12. And then, Tia, I share TCC with you and Texas Wesleyan and UTA. So I've been kind of all over. I will say my very favorite is TCC, Southeast Campus and Northeast. I love the community college, and I love teaching that level. I also think that it's really important for anyone, but especially a board member, to be involved in other organizations and really get a feel for different groups across Arlington. So I'm proud to say that I'm a member of the Arlington Rotary Club. I'm also a member of the Greater Arlington Chamber of Commerce, along with their Women's Alliance, the women's group at the chamber. I'm on the Executive Board of the Arlington Life Shelter. I'm an impact board member. And I've just been asked to serve on the Board of the Open Arms Clinic, which is the free healthcare and dental here in Arlington. And I'm very pleased to have been asked to serve on that board. So I think it's important that we give back to the community, and I try to do that as much as I can. I loved being on the board so far. Before that, being a teacher and a mom, I saw that side of the district. But I love being a board member and seeing the other side of the district, the why we make decisions and how we make those decisions. And I've really enjoyed doing that. The past year and a half, as we all know, has been very, very hard for everyone, teachers, students, parents, board members. It's just been a really a tough struggle. But I'm very proud to say that we have worked hard to make sure that teachers and students are thought of first and kept safe. I'm proud that between March of last year through August, we were able to give out more than 4 million meals to our students. That was breakfast and lunch. And so we were able to provide 4 million meals to our students, even though they were virtual. We had locations set up across the district that were accessed to all students and their parents so that we were able to feed them. We also realized very soon that not everyone had technology at home. So we were able to get out over 35,000 pieces of technology to students that were in need. And then once we did that, we came upon a second problem. What about internet? So many of our families across the district did not have internet service. So we were able to work with On4, and we were able to provide over 3,000 hotspots to families so that the students would be able to use the technology. And that's ongoing. We haven't stopped just because some have come back face to face. They still have their technology devices, and we're still providing internet service for those students. And I hope to be reelected. I know there's lots more that needs to be done, and I want to do. So I would just so much appreciate your support, and let me continue to do the good work and keep moving the kids and the teachers in the right direction. Thank you so much for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Melody. We're gonna go on to Mr. Richard Weber.
Hello? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hello, I'm Richard Weber. I moved to Arlington as a 22-year-old college graduate back in February 1979. My wife and I raised four children. All four graduated from Martin High School. And I've long been a watchdog type as far as the finances of the school district. Back probably more than 10 years ago, I was on financial futures for several years. I served with Mrs. Walton before she was a board member. And basically, I am running because I am really upset. This past year, the school district raised the O and M rate by 13 cents during the middle of a pandemic. We're in the middle of a pandemic. People have lost jobs. Money is tight. And the school district raised the O and M rate to the highest in Tarrant County by 13 cents. This is unacceptable, in my opinion. I feel the current board has lost touch with the citizens and has gotten a little bit weak as far as being able to stand up to for what's right for the students and the taxpayer. I'm retired now. I was a computer programmer for most of that time, so I'm used to thinking logically. I accept input and make logical decisions. So that is how I would attack anything that's presented that I would have to make a decision on the school board. And basically, if there's a certain way that is different than what is going to be recommended by staff, present your case, I'll evaluate it. So I don't know if any of you remember the last time you voted for a school board member of AISD, but it's been three years since there's been a school board election for trustees. The past two years, all the trustees were unchallenged. So it's just been Place One, Two, and Three three years ago that had an actual board race. So hopefully, I can count on y'all for a vote. May 1st, Richard Weber, AISD Place Three. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Weber. We're gonna move on to Ms. Daphne Jackson.
Wife?
You were muted for the first part, so go ahead and go over.
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, Ms. Cole, and the NAACP members. My name is Daphne Jackson, and I am running for Place Three for the Arlington Independent School District trustee. I am a wife, a mother, a small business owner. And in my business, we deal with intellectual developmental disability youth. We also have homes for the elderly. We also offer that for the elderly. The reason I'm running for the school district is I think the school climate need to be addressed. Education justice also is one of the other things that need to be addressed by the boards, and culture bias. I want to be the voice for the underprivileged, the poor, and the disfavored young kids. I also want to have representation for the Black and Brown children that's in schools to know that there are people that's on the board that they can relate to or resemble them that's making school decision, education decisions for them. I have also been part of the board commissions for the City of Arlington on several different of the boards. I have volunteered for several nonprofits. I was a volunteer for Arlington Independent School District for the Parents, Teachers, Students Association. I, my company won an award from the Texas Homeless Network. And last year, when we was out giving out COVID-19 supplies to combat the disease, I ran into several families that was homeless with young children that the education hadn't addressed their situation for as the devices so that they would be able to do their homework assignments, the lack of internet. I think that the board has gotten to the place that they're not connected with the community. Several people in the community that I recently went on and spoke with has never even met any of the members of the board. They don't even know who they are. So the lack of participation in other events in the city, I don't think they really participate in that. Another thing is one of my concerns is that I feel like the terms need to be limited on the trustee boards because after so many times being on there, you're just being a stamp for the superintendent that a lot of things are not being addressed with the community. I like to be part of the, with the education, just in justice in the school districts is that the, it's not equal across the board for as Black and Brown children having the same opportunity or the same resources for other race kids. I feel like Black children in particular don't feel safe in school because of the climates that they have to deal with, culture differences. I do want to support the teachers because they have done an outstanding job this year with the COVID vaccine being in play, I mean, the COVID-19 being in place and all the adjustments that needed to be taken for the education. And I like to make sure that, let's see, right, I have trying to write all my notes down. But that's, my husband and I came here in Arlington in 1988 with our five children, and all of them did attend and graduate from Arlington Independent School District. And I have been an active member in the school system from elementary to high school, and the last one graduated last year. And I just want to thank the board for this opportunity to be a part of this this evening.
Awesome. Thank you so very much, Ms. Daphne. Now, last but certainly not least on this one is Mr. Aaron Reich. You can go forth, sir.
All right. Thank you very, very much. Before I begin, I would be remiss in this National Women's Month not to say kudos to all of you wonderful women that are on this meeting and to all of those within NAACP, the alphas, the zeta phi betas, the delta sigmas, the NCBWs, BYs, all of you that do so many things. And I apologize if I've missed anybody. I'm trying to think of all the relationships that I have. It is full to have a month to celebrate as well as the Women's Day that we had a couple of weeks ago. So thank you for doing this, for the opportunity for us to share our experiences and our words and our thoughts with you. My name is Dr. Aaron Reich. I have been on the board since 2009 when I was first elected. Had a young family then. My wife and I now are proud parents of AISD graduates that are doing wonderful things in the world as a result of AISD. And maybe I'll go into some of that later. But since I've been on the board, I ran initially for making a change, a positive change in our district, lifting up our district, which also lifts up our community at the same time, developing collaborations, partnerships, relationships, working with our city as far as the two governing bodies. That was something that did not exist before I ran and was elected, and it was quite shocking, really. And since 2009 to now, I have been board president. I have been every other officer position. I've been the chair of every board appointed committee, created the Board Governance Committee for Advocacy for our community, for our students, for our staff, our teachers in Austin and at the national level. I have been a champion for change and focus and highlight on communities of color and socio-economically disadvantaged as well in our district. When I, when I, let's see, I've got about two and a half minutes here. So I'll try to rattle some of this off. First off, hired a superintendent that looks like the vast minority majority of students that we have in our district, in Dr. Cavassos, who is a fantastic leader. He is a previous superintendent of the State of Texas winner, has done a great job, have worked on and instigated really the first ever strategic plan. And out of that strategic plan, one of the things with, as a result of, say, the bond packages, it was me that started the instigation of we need hub and MWBE representation and scoring in our matrices for our contractors. That had not been done with this district before. Fast forward, we're at a point of, with the last bond, I think about 20% of implementation there. And I believe we're really, really close at a minimum for an aspirational goal, if not a specific goal of, I would say, probably 25% is where the district is at. That, again, didn't exist without me pushing, being that squeaky wheel, building the capacity, building those partnerships and trust to get everybody on board with doing that. The access to opportunity uh did away with towel fees with uh having to uh rent or purchase uniforms and, and fine arts equipment. And uh, that was again, to provide opportunity for our socioeconomically disadvantaged uh students. Access to opportunity is what it's all about. We have to create the opportunities and we have to provide the access to make it equitable. We have passed a resolution that I was a primary instigator for behind the scenes to do a deep dive in our district uh for uh equity, for racial and social justice. And that is in the works as we speak. Uh, that is going to be deep work. It's going to be difficult work, but it is welcomed work by many uh in our community, especially in our district. That will help raise up our students and our staff and our teachers. It is, it is absolute time uh to do that. I have much more to tell on that, but I, I'm a champion on, on that regard. So I know my time's about up. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Aaron, and you will have, or Dr. Aaron, you will have a chance to speak more um in a little bit. So everyone has had a chance to speak. Thank you so much for sharing that information with us. Gives us a great feel for who you are and to understand where you're coming from. So a couple of other things, I want to um encourage you all to please feel free to just be honest and be yourself with us. We just want to understand who you are and where you're coming from so we can make an educated decision. So don't feel like you have to say anything that isn't natural to you because we just want to know who you are, right? And then also, remember you'll have two minutes to answer each of the questions. You are not required to answer any of the questions. So what we'll do is once I pose the question that you use the raise your hand feature and then I will go in the order that I see them pop up. And if you don't raise your hand, then we just won't call on you. You don't have to worry about that question. There's no judgment. Uh, so just so that you know, you have the right of refuse on any question. And also because we've had several people join us um after we got started, everyone should know that this is being recorded so that we can share it on our website and potentially our social media platform for those who are unable to attend, but definitely want to get to know you as well. So with that, all of that said, are there any questions uh before I move forward? Awesome. All right. So we're gonna jump right into the first question. Remember to use that raise your hand feature when you're wanting to respond. You will have two minutes. You will get the green check at thirty seconds and the red X at zero and then you will be, or at fifteen and then you'll be muted at zero.
I have a question. I have a question.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Um, I don't have a raise your hand feature on my screen anywhere.
If you scroll down to the bottom, do you see a smiley face that says reactions underneath it?
I see reactions, yes.
Click on that and then you should see a hand as one of the options.
Okay.
Try it out.
Is that it?
There you go. Yep, that'll work. We'll take that one. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Now go ahead and put that one down. Just click it again.
If you click it again, it'll go off.
Did you get stuck?
There you go.
You got it. Good job.
Okay.
All right. So when, once you are responding, then definitely everybody go ahead and lower your hand. So that's why I wanted you to try both ways. Okay. Awesome. First question. What are your first priorities, first two, if you are to be elected or reelected? So what are your first two priorities if you are to be elected or reelected? Anyone want to answer that? We'll start with Mr. Weber, then we'll go to Mr. Reich, Dr. Reich. And then we'll go to Ms. Sarah. And then we'll go to Ms. Melody. And then we'll go to Ms. Daphne. All right. So that will be the order. Hopefully you remember because I don't. All right. So let's start with Mr. Weber, I believe was first. Go for it.
Yes. Um, can you hear me? No, you can't hear me.
Yes, we can hear you. Nope. Now you just muted yourself. Unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay. The first thing I would do is lower the tax rate for the citizens. The uh, they passed the uh, the tax vote election passed generating fifty-six more million dollars, which turned a large thirty-one million deficit into a twenty-five million dollar surplus. So you can transfer money into the debt service portion of the tax rate and therefore lower the tax rate on the people that are paying the taxes. There's no, you raise the tax rate so high and then just keep putting it into the general fund. You can lower the tax rate for the people that have to pay the taxes by transferring money into the bond debt service fund. So therefore the calculation for that part of the tax rate will be lower. That is the first thing I would do. The second thing is just be open and listen because I don't feel the current board is listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, just go ahead and go.
I think it was me, not, not positive. Um, and I think when we click on the hand again, I don't think it makes it go away. Uh, I was having trouble. So if you see some of us with our hands standing up there, that might be why. So, okay. So I'll go ahead and, and began. Uh, the, the first two priorities are, are uh one, we are at the beginning of digging out of this COVID pandemic situation. With that, the priority is taking care of our students uh and, and taking care of our staff, getting everybody uh back into more of a normal situation and getting our, our students in a situation of, of really positive learning again, in-person learning. Uh, there's, there's many things that go along with that uh regarding uh what we can do from a budgetary uh priority standpoint, what we can do in offering uh extra, extra summer school, uh which is definitely going to be happening. What to do on the beginnings of the school year next year in the fall. Uh, coupled with that, there's a lot of focus in the budget and how to make all that work. Uh, but we're also moving at toward the end of our current strategic plan. And so a, a big priority is moving into developing our next strategic plan to propel our district even further than where we are currently. Uh, that happens over the summer. So just the timing of it with the election uh in May, starting in June, we go through budget and we will begin our strategic planning process as well. A big component of that strategic planning is enacting that resolution and focusing on equity and inclusion and really looking at, at what there is systemically as far as bias in that system. And at the board level, leading, we're putting that into our strategic plan so that it is an absolute. These things are going to happen for our students and our community.
Was, was Ms. Sarah next?
Yes, I think so. I didn't, I didn't know if you were done, Dr. Reich. Good. Okay. All right. Well, um, the first thing that um, you know, I'm really passionate about and I would really um like to contribute and accomplish and accomplishing if elected is you know, kind of similar to what Dr. Reich mentioned, you know, I, I really am striving for more normalcy uh moving into the fall. And realistically, if elected, um, you know, I, I would probably be sworn in after a lot of decisions were already made, but I believe that we need to develop with all stakeholders, especially our current teachers and staff, um, you know, a really strong plan um for next year, what that will look like, what it will entail. Um, you know, what it won't look like. And we need to communicate that plan very clearly to our teachers and staff. Um, it's really important to have their input. Um, it's also very important that they are, you know, part of the decision-making and they're not finding out about this plan at the same time as the general public. Um, and I would also, you know, really like to see our students next year. Technology is a tool and it's a wonderful tool and it's, you know, it's the direction we're heading as a society. Um, but you know, as a, as a mother of a seven-year-old, high functioning on the autism spectrum, um, I do not want our students to be on devices nearly as much as they are um this school year. And I understand the need for virtual learning and I, I definitely understand the need um for equity and you know, in no way, shape or form do I expect our teachers to have to do two full-time jobs by creating two separate sets of lesson plans and curriculum um week after week. But you know, it's very important that we're taking a good, you know, a good, realistic look in the mirror um and understanding the logistics of what our students are facing in the classroom. And again, I'm in classrooms every day and I'm not, you know, just, you know, seeking out input. I'm living this as an educator. And so, you know, again, that's where I would able, be able to bring a lot of insight and solutions um moving forward. Secondly, I know I mentioned this briefly in my introduction, um, but I would really want to strengthen an authentic connection between home and school.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Sarah. Uh, I don't remember if Ms. Melody had her hand up. Okay. So we'll go Ms. Melody, then Ms. Daphne, and then Ms. Polly.
Thank you, Ms. Tia. So the two things that I think I would really focus on, um, number one is a safe return to school for students and teachers. And I think we're all gonna have to feel good about that. We're gonna have to see that the numbers have gone down. We're gonna have to see that the number of vaccines have gone up. I think there's things that need to fall into place before the majority of their, uh, uh, of us here in the district would really feel safe about sending our teachers and our students back. Um, I know that we've already been talking in, in our board meetings about how we, we, we can't keep doing the, the dual system with one teacher teaching both. That's it, it's not fair to the teachers. It's, it's too much for them. So we've already been talking about how we're going to do that for next year. With certain teachers only teaching face-to-face and certain teachers only teaching uh virtually. So they won't have the, the dual jobs. I just can't imagine how hard that, that's been for them, being a teacher. I just, I can't imagine. So we want to do that. In that same realm of keeping everyone safe, we do know that a lot of our students have suffered. They are missing their friends. They're feeling disconnected. So we've already been talking about how we can bring in more and more counselors to be able to work at the schools to, to visit with these students and see if they can work through some of those issues because we know that there's been damage done. There, there has been. They've been very isolated. So we're hoping to have counselors available that will work with students and, and make them feel better and get them back to where they were. The second thing that I would want to do is to continue to find programs that will benefit all the students. We are constantly adding more um, uh, programs to the Dan Dyburt Center. We have academies for fine arts and languages. We have leadership academies. We have world language academies. We need to find more and more specialized programs that appeal to all of our students and encourage them to be able to go to.
Thank you so much, Ms. Melody. Um, next up is Ms. Daphne.
To get the parents, teacher associations uh active. Uh, so the black and brown community can feel like they're a part of the um education here in Arlington Independent School Districts. So the uh, active parent, teacher association, student association. It needs to be activated and it really needs to be addressed. One of the other things I would like to uh, uh, another thing I would like to do is to uh look into recruiting more brown and, and uh, black and brown teachers. So black, black and brown students will feel like they are appreciated and valued uh in Arlington Independent School District. I know the recruitment and hiring practice in Arlington, they um, they tend to leave out a lot of the African-American um educators. And if they are, they are placed in lower um school districts or the Title One schools where they receive less payer than the, the other peers. So those are the two things I would like to uh address.
Thank you so much, ma'am. And then that takes us to Ms. Polly.
Thank you very much. Well, um, I was writing notes furiously here. Pardon me while I kind of pick up and hold it out real far here. Um, uh, my first priority has got to be our kids and getting them back into a normal situation. I think if we've proven anything this year, uh, you know, some may have thought that computers and teaching on computers was going to be the future, but I think we have proved that um, the best thing for our kids, especially our youngest ones, uh, is to be in a classroom with a teacher who has, you know, connected with them and are, and are delivering instruction to them in person. Uh, I think we're headed that direction if all holds together with uh COVID pandemic and, you know, who knows what that will bring. Um, we've got to keep our kids and our staff and our community safe as we're doing this. I, I appreciate everything that Ms. Fowler uh said about, about that. The children are gonna be my first uh priority. Uh, my second priority will be keeping and attracting uh really excellent teachers. Um, it, it has been a proven fact that the better that teacher is in that classroom with those students, the better opportunity they have to learn. Uh, we may be facing a teacher shortage. Uh, no one can say that, but it's uh for sure. But it is certainly something that could happen. So I think that uh not only do we need to hire the best teachers we can find, but we do need, I agree completely with Ms. Jackson. We need to hire uh minority teachers who look like our kids so that they have role models uh to, you know, and people they can identify with. So I, I think uh we're going to have to do two things to, to do that. We're going to have to pay our teachers competitively. Uh, that's the reason that it was so important that we were able to pass the V A T R E. Thank you, uh, all of you that helped us.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Polly. Um, so let's move on to the next question. And I'm actually gonna pull the next question from a comment that was made and some of the comments that have been made around it. So Dr. Reich's comment about equity. And so I want to ask, what is equity? What does equity look like? If we're talking about creating equity, we need to bring it down out of the clouds and have tangible, seeable action items, tasks and outcomes. So my question is, and, and side note, I couldn't imagine, right, being in the, in the public classroom. I, I have a K twelve or eighth grade to twelfth grade uh certificate. I used to teach high school. And I am so grateful that I am not teaching there during this pandemic because wow. But that said, what does equity look like? We'll go with Ms. Sarah first. And then Ms. Melody. And then Ms. Polly. And then the Ms. Daphne. And then Dr. Reich for five. Okay. All right. And I numbered you this time, so I should remember. So we're gonna start with Ms. Sarah.
Okay. So many things come to mind when I hear the word equity, um, but in regards to our children, um, it's, it's just glaring to me that equity is so important. It is so important that each and every student here in A I S D is receiving top-notch education. And you know, earlier tonight, we referred to um, you know, the strategic plan. Well, a big part of our district's strategic, strategic plan is preparing one hundred percent of our students for college and career readiness. And you know, college is not the path for each of our children. And so, you know, that's why we have career technology options and we're growing in that, in that realm. Um, but to truly be equitable, um, we all need to, you know, do some self-reflecting. Um, and I'm not just talking about classroom teachers. I'm talking about all of us. Um, and we need to model that for our children as well. Um, you know, I attended um a conference, a teaching conference over um, over the summer and diversity training was a big part of it. And you know, one thing that really resonated with me was check your bias. Always check your bias because if you're aware of, you know, your own biases and your own shortcomings, that's number one. And you know, that could be really uncomfortable to do. But you know, as a white teacher in, you know, uh, my own classroom, I was always intentional of making sure that each and every child in my classroom felt welcome. Um, and they, you know, they saw, you know, people that looked like them, felt like them, had a family like theirs. Um, not only, you know, in, you know, social studies class, but also in literacy, in the books that we read, in the flyers that we send home. Um, not only, you know, in, you know, social studies class, but also in literacy and the books that we read, in the flyers that we send home. And it's so very important that we are all intentional about that. Um, and again, that we are modeling that for our children by the way that we treat each other.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, number two was Ms. Melody.
Thank you, Ms. Tia. To me, equity means everyone has access, everyone has the same access to the things that they want or things that are important to them. We have to make sure that all students have the same opportunities and not only the opportunities, but a way to get there. By, by busing our kids from their home campus to other programs, if, if that's what's needed. But we have to make sure that all the opportunities are really all the opportunities for all the students. Not just whites, not just blacks or browns. Everyone needs to have access to the programs that will improve their life or whatever it is that they're going for. So making sure not only that, that those opportunities are available, but that there's access to get to those programs and opportunities. So to me, it means, you know, um, um, making sure that the playing field is equal, that it's equitable. And that everyone has the same opportunities to, to those programs.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Ms. Polly. You're on mute, Ms. Polly.
I missed the button. Sorry about that. Thank you. Um, well, equity, uh, as both prior speakers have said, are, is tremendously important. And I think it first starts with, uh, it, it's more than just establishing holidays for, uh, minority, uh, heroes. Uh, it's changing the curriculum. Arlington has done that. In 2017, we adopted active learning cycles. Uh, developed that. It's a learner framework that, uh, was founded on 12 research-based best practices in order to ensure that, uh, increased equity across the district pertaining to the quality of student learning experiences. Um, Ms. Fowler mentioned, uh, busing our kids so that they, we provide the opportunity, but we give them access by moving them on a bus from their high school to their, um, uh, courses out at the correct, uh, the Career Tech Center. Uh, we also have to think about who we're doing business with. Dr. Rice mentioned, uh, uh, that. Uh, we have to have some uncomfortable conversations about racism. We need the whole, uh, team of eight to buy in and be united. And I think we are. Uh, I believe we are united, uh, under the amazing leadership of our board president, Keisha Mays, who is, uh, done a really good job of leading us on that. We've got to, uh, engage the community in dialogue and surveys. We're about to launch some surveys about equity. We've got to establish equity policies that have teeth. And we've got to gather data, uh, on the operations throughout the district. We're working on that also. And foremost, all of our teachers must understand that education done well is the greatest equalizer.
Thank you, ma'am. And next up is Ms. Daphne.
I'm unmuted. Okay, good. To me, equity means that all students feel safe in school. Um, and the, and the way most kids will feel safe in school is to have representation across the board. From counselors to teachers to principals, to every, um, staff member that's in the school, just not, um, uh, uh, security people. Um, so I feel like equity to me is that each and every student receives quality education that makes them ready, college-ready, uh, and just not a diploma in hand and put out here in society and, uh, say they are graduate, but they're not prepared for the real world. Because of the limited access that they had to all the other, um, activities and the resources that was available for certain groups that's not available to everyone. So to me, equity means having a student that graduates from high school that's college-ready. And they feel safe while they're in the classrooms. That's equity to me.
Thank you, ma'am. And last on that question, as far as I know, is Dr. Rice.
Well, thank you. So, uh, a lot of people have covered, uh, similar thoughts on, on equity. There's a, a, a graphic that maybe, uh, maybe many of you have seen where, uh, it's a difference between, uh, equity and, and equal or equality. And it's three different sized students peering, uh, some over a fence, some at a fence, because one's very tall, one's shorter and one's further than that. And the, the, the old solution was give them all a box that's the same height. It doesn't change anything. It might, for that kid in the middle, he might be able to peek over that, that other kid, still not getting anything. So equity is changing that up where the first kid maybe doesn't get any kind of box. That shortest kid gets all three. Oh, all right. Okay. I, I don't know. I disappeared. I'm back. I don't know what that does in my time, but I'll, I'll, I'll try to be succinct here. Um, so we, we've tried, uh, very deliberately, very strategically to incorporate those types of things. Uh, as I've said, the access to the opportunity, creating the opportunities and creating that access. Things that I mentioned like eliminating towel fees, uh, eliminating, uh, uniform rentals and, and equipment rentals. Uh, that levels the playing field. Transportation was mentioned to our Career Tech Center. That is absolutely vital. Our goal is that all students 100% are graduating college or career-ready. And part of all of that is the culture of our institution, right? Um, I, I, I think it was Ms. McMurro that, that talked about it, that we, we all have to look internally at our own bias. And, and I'm a believer and I try to live up to this every day. All of us need to own up that we, sorry, I had my timer set here.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Um, we appreciate your remarks. And I want to, uh, make sure that I did not miss Mr. Weber's hand. So you did not want to weigh in on this question, right?
And if, Tia, if we could, because I did give him a little pause for the time that he was out. Are we gonna let him finish his sentence?
Sure. Dr. Rice?
Thank you. I was just going to say, we all need to embrace that we understand that we don't understand. If we can keep that in the forefront of our minds at all times, we're all going to progress forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up is our next question, which is a continuation of this discussion on equity and access. And so the question is, there is a decades-long-standing achievement gap that has been noted by the state, um, education agencies and the national education agencies between white students and black and brown students. And so, first question, it's a two-parter. First part is, do you believe that this is a priority to address? And if so, how will you use policy and influence to address it? If not, why not? And if you are an incumbent, I would encourage you to also potentially refer to things that you have already done to help address this longstanding issue. So I'm going to say it again because that was a lot, right? So there is a decades-long-standing achievement gap between white students and black and brown students. Do you believe this is a priority to address? If so, how will you use policy and in, influence to address it as a board member? If you're already a board member, how have you addressed it? And if not, why is it not a priority? All right. So what's our order this time? We got Ms. Polly as number one. We got Ms. Sarah as number two.
And, and, and actually, Ms. Walton, was your hand still up in the last question?
Ms. Polly? No, I don't think so.
Okay. I saw her do like this when she, when you said.
Oh, is your hand not up, Ms. Polly?
Yes, my hand is up. I, I actually hit the button and got it right.
I was just checking with you.
Thank you very much, really.
I've got three on this one. Does no one else want to tackle this question? I'm getting a no and, uh, no.
Uh, could you repeat the question one more time for me?
I sure can. So there is an achievement gap between white students and black and brown students in AISD. It has been longstanding. It has, it goes back decades. AISD has been cited by national education agencies for the achievement gap, meaning that black and brown students are not doing as well as white students. So the question is, do you believe that this needs to be addressed? If so, how will you address it as a board member? And if not, why not address it? All right. So should I add you to the list of respondents on that one, Ms. Daphne?
Okay.
Absolutely.
We've got four. And I can tell you, these are questions that we pulled from interested parties. So they definitely want to hear what you all have to say. Mr. Weber, thank you for wanting to chime in on that one. So I've got Ms. Polly first, Ms. Sarah second, Ms., or Dr. Rice third, Ms. Daphne fourth, and Mr. Weber fifth. Oh, and then we've got Ms. Mo- Melody six. Awesome. We've got everybody on that question. Ms. Polly, go first.
Thank you very much. Well, of course, we have got to address, uh, this and make it a priority. Uh, we have, uh, we have been, uh, doing that for some time now, uh, with our, um, uh, opening things up for access and that sort of thing. But just to make it very short. I see that the best way we can start this process in high gear, or get it in high gear, is to devote the resources that we, uh, all that we can to our pre-K for, um, program, full-day kindergarten. We started it this year, but with the pandemic, uh, the attendance was kind of not there. Um, we are going to be receiving some federal money. There's some talk about maybe some scholarships for others, four-year-olds that maybe don't qualify, uh, for the full-day program. But I, I see a robust, um, pre-K four program as a great start uh, to really ramping this whole issue up. We've had, uh, community-based pre-Ks for 29 years. These are pre-Ks that are in daycare centers where our teachers take the materials and go to the daycare centers and, uh, instruct those four-year-olds. But we all, we now have a full-time pre-K in every single one of our, um, elementary school campuses. Uh, and I think we just need to devote the time, attention and federal money to, um, really ramping that up. It, it's just one idea. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Ms. Sarah.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to piggyback off, off of something Ms. Walton mentioned. Um, I got a great news alert on my phone today that, um, universal pre-K is actually, um, a big push right now, um, in the White House. So, you know, this might be a nationwide thing and that would really change, you know, our, our whole country. Um, and getting early education, uh, more accessible to everyone. That would be huge. Um, but yes, um, the achievement gap is very real and it absolutely should be a priority of ours. Absolutely. Um, and you know, again, we serve almost 60,000 students and Arlington is such a diverse city. Um, it was when I was a student, um, attending, you know, Bowie High School. And it's so important that we're looking at each individual campus and, and the needs of the students that we serve, um, in that campus. And this is why, um, family engagement is such, um, a critical piece and such a huge part of my platform. Um, our campuses have a family engagement liaison. Um, and I would love to provide more opportunities, more time, more training for them to collaborate, um, to learn from our PACE department headed up by, um, Erin Paralis, and also to learn from each other. Um, because so many of these professionals are so innovative and passionate about what they do. Um, and it would be great to give them, you know, more time, more resources to collaborate. And I know that COVID has thrown a wrench into things, but, um, I really love getting parents on campus, but also getting campus personnel out in the community, out of the brick and mortar schools. Um, you know, that's an initiative we really need to see. Um, and what I don't want to see is, you know, teachers just looking at that achievement gap when they look at standardized test data. Um, because the reality is, you know, there's pressure in that, in that area. And, you know, we don't need to be teaching to the test or sending home extra text, test practice or anything like that. Um, we need to look at early literacy and we need to look at strengthening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sarah. Um, next up is Dr. Rice.
Well, thank you very much. Um, it, it's absolutely a priority. Uh, when I was first on the board, it, it was a glaring priority then as well. The, uh, socio-economically disadvantaged, which includes a disproportionate amount of our, our, uh, communities of color. Uh, they, they deserve the same sets of opportunities. And so y- your question was specifically about policy. What have we done? What can we do? And, and that's, that's a tricky one, quite honestly. To govern achievement is probably the most difficult thing that nobody has really kind of really cracked that nut yet. And so we have tried a barrage of different things that focus on that access to the opportunities, to focus on, uh, improvement plans on the campuses that, that are real plans. When I first got on the board, they were compliance checkboxes. They didn't mean anything. And that was very disturbing when we could use those as a tool to drive that achievement forward. We have made tremendous achievement gains, uh, in our populations of color, in our lower socioeconomic, uh, disadvantaged populations. If you look at the data, there's been great gains. There needs to be more. And so one of the things that I think we will be moving forward with in relation, say, to those campus achievement plans or improvement plans is achievement through an equity lens. And that is, I think, an ingredient that has not been there. I think it's been there, but not as a focal point. And I think that would help because everybody has their own learning styles. And we have to be able to tap into each one of those. So that's just one example. But there's, it's a big, a big tough issue that we have to address.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Ms. Daphne.
Um, yes, we do have to address that, ma'am. Um, we have to address diversity. And we have to do it long-term. Not just when some incident happens. We, you know, we want to address it at that moment and then sweep it back up under the rug. That's why it continues to happen. Because we don't want to address diversity long-term. I think that the way we can help that is that the Parent-Teacher-Student Association plays an active role. So the parents of black and brown children will feel welcome and safe and, and, and appreciated of, with their, their voices being heard. Um, so that's my way of how we would have to address the situation. Is that black and brown families' voices are not heard, is not valued. And then diversity is just a moment thing that we address at that moment. And then we just go back to what we consider the norm. And that's ignoring the facts.
Thank you very much. Next up is, oh, Mr. Weber.
Okay. Um, it would need to be addressed. Now, I have no answers as far as education. I have to evaluate logically input from people as the superintendent that would suggest possible. that would suggest possible solutions. So, I'm not coming up with a bunch of answers to give you. Basically, any, anything that's evaluated, we have to make sense. And I would have to rely on others to supply what would need to be tried, or what we really need to do is look at where something is working and try to implement what is already working. So, yes, I would want to evaluate something that's working, another standard that's already working somewhere else, and try to implement it here. Thank you.
Got myself. Thank you for your response, Mr. Weber. So, I'm going to ask another question that's closely related to this one. I will say that as a branch, some of the things that we encourage people to do is to look for people who are really educating themselves on the issues. And so, when people are wanting to take a position of power and hold influence and, and develop policy and implement those things, we're looking for people who have thought through kind of what they're up against before they want to take a position. And I will say also that it's, it's a little bit concerning if we don't hear about how there's a connection between the policies and practices and the culture and outcomes that are created. And so, that's why we're asking these questions that are really specifically tied to issues that we know about in the district, because you can't necessarily create achievement by a individual policy, but you can create a culture that enables achievement, right? And, and it impacts all of your areas, from hiring to, you know, who's in the building, to services and wraparound services, to how curriculum is disseminated, which happens with, you know, the teaching and the development. And so, all of those things work together to create an environment that is equitable for every student to get their learning at the highest level. And so, that's kind of why we're asking these questions, is to try to see who kind of gets that connection between all of those factors, because again, we want to make an informed decision about who we're voting for. And so, the next question is similar but different. Yes, ma'am.
Could I answer that question before we move on?
What question?
I think that was number six.
Oh, no. Did I miss you, Ms. Melody?
Yes, that's okay. Harry. Thank you, Ms. Tia. So, yes, I do recognize that there is a gap in, within A I S D. Some of the things that I think might help is increased instruction time. There are some students that don't learn as quickly as other students, and I was always one of those. I needed a little bit more time, especially when it came to math. So, I think sometimes if we slow down or have ways that students can absorb the material on a slower rate before the teacher moves on, I think that's helpful. Supplemental instruction works well, and Tia, you know how well that works at T C C. I think if we do have more of the supplemental instruction, where there's an additional person in the classroom that can help students, I think that is, is a good thing. I think we also need to monitor students' achievements regularly and timely. You know, sometimes we can't wait till they're three weeks in or at the end of the six weeks. For some students, that's too late. Some students need more close monitoring and more often. And I don't know, you know, what the, what the magic number or time is, but I do know that we need to monitor certain students more often to make sure that they're learning, that that gap is not increasing. We need to make sure we monitor. And then I think, as Sarah mentioned, we really need to link home with school. We've got to find a way to get the parents involved, because if the parents aren't involved with the school, it kind of makes the kids think that they don't need to be as involved. So, finding that, that link, where we can reach out to parents and hope that they will join in with the schools, I think that would help us with that gap as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melody. And again, I am so sorry for missing you on that question. It was so unintentional. Next up is the similar question. So, just like the achievement gap, there is a longstanding discipline disparity. What we're finding is that students of color are sent home, sent to the office, are labeled, are put in special ed, all of those things at an alarmingly high rate in A I S D that is not comparable to, to reality. And so, the question becomes similar to the other one. Is this a priority? And then, how do we address it? Or how do you, using policy and your influence, how do you address this issue? And then, if it's not a priority, then definitely you can say that. Who is weighing in on this question? We've got Ms. Sarah. We got Dr. Reich. We got Mr. Weber. Three. We got Ms. Melody, Ms. Polly, four, five, and... Am I missing? I think we lost Ms. Daphne. She might have accidentally... Oh, no, there she is. I missed you. Okay. Was your hand up on that one, Ms. Daphne? Yes? Okay. Awesome. Thank you. So, I am not going to miss anybody. This time, we are going to start with Ms. Sarah.
Okay. Well, yes, I think that this is a priority, and, and you know, like you said, discipline is a big issue in schools. And this is something that we, again, need to be mindful about and look at each individual campus and really analyze, you know, our, our discipline, you know, and also like on the heels of a pandemic, how is that affecting, you know, discipline scenarios in schools? And you know what? When it comes to discipline, we need to look at the people, not the programs. You know, as a teacher, I will tell you plain and simple. Kids need to know that you care about them. You can't teach them anything until you, they know that they are loved and that they are cared for in their classroom. And if you can establish a true relationship with each one of your students and really keep, you know, keep maintaining that relationship, not only are they going to thrive and learn in your classroom, there will be less disciplinary incidents as well. And you know, I think that that's something that we all need training on. It's something that we need to make sure our assistant principals are very intentional about, and it's something that we need to be very careful about when we make hiring decisions and, you know, getting teachers and retaining teachers in our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Next up on this question is Dr. Reich.
Thank you. So, I, I think what Ms. McMurro stated, love, we have to show love. That's so, so true. Along with that, we have many situations where those rates are inflated, and they, they just should not be. And I, I know she stated, we, we have to look more at, at the, each individual and not just programs. I will say, programs like PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention Support, is something that we got pushback when we implemented that in the district. And it was really designed specifically to look at each individual student and their situation and not just send them to the AP and get them in that suspension track. And, and you know, schools have overall a reputation of, you know, the, the schools, the pipeline to prison type thing. And we, we are looking at that all the time to address that. PBIS is, is one of those situations. There's other things with our security officers as far as training to develop relationships with students, with all the students, instead of just being a heavy hand. We have worked our, our S R O contracts with our, our police department that we have a great partnership with in being less punitive and more relationship-building. And along with that, there's been many great programs that have come into play regarding mentorship programs and that type of thing, to build those relationships, build that trust, get to the underlying situations for each child to help raise them up, instead of just sending them to the office and getting them in trouble.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Next up is Mr. Weber.
Okay. If the, the A I S D has applied a zero tolerance to many of its rules. So, if the rules are being enforced equally, which is something that would need to be checked, there is, shouldn't be much difference that can be done. I mean, you either have to follow the rules or don't follow the rules. Now, I agree, the teachers and, and love and care affect a whole lot of student attitude, and that could definitely be an improvement. But as far as when it gets, when students get sent to the office and sent home and things like that, it's far past that stage. And I'm not sure how you can change that and still be equitable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Next up is Ms. Melody.
Thank you. Well, I think the first thing needs to be kids to feel safe. If you feel safe and accepted in a classroom, I don't think you're going to have the discipline problems. I know when I was teaching six through 12, I'd hear teachers complaining about certain students and this one and that one. And I had to be honest and just say, I don't recognize that behavior in that child at all. They don't, they don't act like that in my classroom. And I know my sister teaches at Workman, and she's had teachers that will say to her, oh, this person's so bad, or that person's so bad, or I had to send this one out of the class. My, my sister says, I don't have those problems with those students. So, I think setting up a positive, supportive, safe environment is probably step one. Step two would be class expectations. Kids need to know what's expected and what, what is accepted and what's not accepted. If they know the rules, they, they can play better. They, they can be in the classroom and know what's expected and, and rise up to expectations. I also think that it's important to learn how to redirect behavior. And I know that comes a little bit easier with more seasoned teachers. Some of the newer or younger teachers might need more training on that, but there's a way to redirect it. You don't have to call them out and make a spectacle of them and escalate the situation. You can learn how to redirect the behavior, and that will kind of level it out, and it won't rise to the severity that sometimes it does. And as Erin had said, mentorships, I think mentorships are so important. We need more gentlemen and even ladies of color to come into the schools and serve as mentors. Some of these students maybe don't get that direction in the mentorship at home. So, we need to find people in the community that they respect, that they look up to, that they look like, and bring in mentors for that students. I think it could make a world of difference. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Next up is Ms. Polly.
Thank you. Well, excellent suggestions from the two former and current teacher how it is. I attended a seminar, a symposium in February, and a young man named Dr. Brandon P. Fleming was the keynote. He is the Harvard Diversity Project guru, whatever. He was 27 years old, and he has written a book called "Miseducated: A Memoir", and it's due out in June. I cannot wait to be able to read it. And it, it, it's an account of his transformation from a delinquent drug-dealing dropout to an award-winning Harvard educator through literature and debate. He found an extracurricular class in debate just lit him up. And his quote was, "Meeting a student where he is is important. We must go to the client and serve them where they are." And, and not just where they are, maybe as far as their abilities or whatever, but to, to really look at their, you know, at them, at their culture and where they are in more ways than just their, their aptitude or their ability. Because obviously, he had a lot of aptitude, but just he came from a really awful home life and just didn't have a chance. And of course, he reiterated that education is the great equalizer, as so many people in this seminar, symposium said. So, yes, it, it should be a priority, the discipline disparity. And I think it's, I, I think a lot of it comes from, as some of the others have said, a misunderstanding.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. And last on this question is Ms. Daphne.
Yes, ma'am. I feel like with school climate being, it is so important. And that's where teachers that resemble kids of black and brown makes a difference. I feel like it affects their performance. They identify with the child more so than Caucasian teachers. I feel like this is where the, the hiring practice should come in, in the independent school district. That's where the even playing ground should take, this is where it should start or begin, is that when we start hiring qualified teachers, we should also make sure that they have some form of culture education to let them know that when a child acts out, the first thing you shouldn't do is suspend that child or make him feel that he's not valued or, or that just don't want him in the classroom. And that's what a lot of parents from the black and brown community has, has expressed, is that whenever a child of, of, of a black and brown student, the first thing they want to do is expel that kid, get him out the room, don't want to address whatever is going on with the kid. So, I think that's where the teachers and the identification for black and brown students, they will have more sensitivities to that, to the culture. That's just my way of handling it.
Thank you, ma'am. I will, in a moment, move to the two questions that have been asked in the chat, and then I'll round it out with my last question, and we will finish up for this evening. I do want to say, though, in hearing all of the remarks, I want to make sure that everyone is aware that black and brown students are not inherently violent, disrespectful, or underachieving or unintelligent. And I think sometimes that that premise can pervade a space. And so, when we speak from a place of assuming a need for remediation, we're actually labeling students or assuming a need for discipline, we're actually labeling students. And it starts from how you view the student when they walk into a space. And so, it speaks to that point that most of you have brought up about hiring and about all the opportunities. But if that person in the room doesn't see that student in the same way they see every student, if that person in the room sees a behavior by this student as aggressive or disrespectful that they would not see similarly from a student that's not of color, then that's where the problem is. It's not the student that's the problem, because students are students, right? Most of them are the same. But it's the adults that are the problems. And so, we want to make sure that we're clear that it's not necessarily that students are unable to be successful, is that they have not been enabled to be successful. But that said, I will move on to the questions in the chat. So, there are two questions in the chat. I see one from Ms. Stephanie Swan, who says, "I'm concerned about whitewashed textbooks which are attempting to change history, particularly as it relates to the history and achievements of Americans of color. Would you support supplemental tools that will ensure that all students learn the true contributions and sufferings of all Americans?" Who wants to tackle that one? I see Dr. Reich as number one. I see Ms. Polly as number two. I see Ms. Sarah as number three, and Mr. Weber as number four. I see Ms. Melody as number five. All right. Number one, Dr. Reich.
Thank you. Absolutely. Support supplemental materials. The State Board of Education dictates what our, our, our textbooks of choice are. And as we all well know, at the state level, it is highly politicized. I believe there is a great deal of institutional racism and bias built into that politicization. So, it is up to So it is up to us as the local independent authority to provide supplemental materials, which the district does, without just reliance on said textbook. And I believe there is a great opportunity to have not just segments of classes, but specific classes honoring our black history, our Mexican-American history. There, there's amazing things that have happened in our United States of America because of persons of color. And I can tell you, I didn't learn it in my school. That's not right. That's not right. The things that I've learned has been over lifelong educating myself and communicating with others and learning. Our children don't deserve that. Our country, our nation doesn't deserve that. So absolutely support that hands down. And with our strategic planning process and are looking at peeling back the layers on the onion of inequities in the district, that is going to happen.
Thank you. Next on that one is Ms. Polly.
Thank you. Did I, yes, I'm unmuted. Okay. Oh, yes. This is a subject near and dear to my heart. Some of you may know that the last 14 years of my teaching career in the Arlington School District, I was an elementary school librarian. And there's not a better source of independent material for children to find out about anything and everything than our, our libraries. And Arlington is blessed with a very fine library system that's, that the librarians have all been teachers before and have their degree in library science. So I will just say that we need to focus on teaching our kids, our students, to direct their own education and supplying supplemental information to them in the form of primary documents or supplemental readers and that sort of thing would, would be the thing I would vote for in a heartbeat. So from the librarian.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up on this one is Ms. Sarah.
Yes, I, I agree with most everything that's been said. And it is so important that we are teaching accurate history. And you know, the textbook is a tool, but that is not a curriculum. And you know, th- this is where the art of teaching comes into play and why it's so important. Teachers should be given the autonomy to teach their lessons the best way they know how. And you know, our kids need to see themselves in every aspect of the curriculum, not just social studies, but literacy as well. And a perfect example is my very first year of teaching, fresh out of college. I could not wait to do a novel unit on Charlotte's Web with my brand new fourth graders. And you know, Lynn Hale, I just assumed all of these kids will be crazy about Charlotte's Web because as a, you know, fourth grade child, that was one of my favorite books. But you know, the setting is on farm and they, they just couldn't connect to the character and the plot. And that's just a perfect example of tailoring your instruction and your classroom culture to the children that you serve and being very intentional about that. It is so important.
Thank you so much. And I too read and loved Charlotte's Web when I was younger.
Always makes me cry, though.
I watch it every time it comes on. And so next up on this question, I swear that is not making me biased towards her. Next question is Mr. Weber. Our next response is Mr. Weber.
All right, the state does control what happens as far as the, the books used in the classroom. And I would support anything additional that's presenting facts. Facts are what's important. It's how you make decisions. That's how you learn knowledge. Facts. So yes, I would definitely support additional facts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And lastly, Ms. Melody.
Thank you. I do think that a lot of the material has been whitewashed. And I understand that. And I like the fact that many teachers now, whether it's, you know, right or wrong, we, we buy the textbooks. But a lot of teachers don't use the textbooks. They bring in their own. And I know at college, we can use called, you know, open access, where we can go out and find the material that we want, that we think best suits our classes. And I think there are a lot of stu- teachers in public school that are doing that. They have the book maybe as, as one form of teaching, but they definitely look for supplemental, supplemental material to bring in. And as Polly said, the librarians are the best. They can find those books and they can help with those lessons. And I think that a lot of our teachers are doing that. And I think we are getting a little bit better about that because I know what I learned in public school and what my son learned are very different. And so he's learned, he's been exposed to a little bit more than I was. And I'm, I'm grateful for that. And I'm, I'm grateful that he had those opportunities to, to see other things and be exposed to other things. So I think, I think we're seeing that whitewashing and we're realizing it. And I think we're doing some things to try to make that better with the supplemental materials and lessons from librarians. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melody. All right. So we're going to do the next question in the chat. And I'm going to go lightning round now. So we're going to go one minute responses on these last questions, just so we can get in the really good stuff. So this next question in the chat, just one minute for those of you who want to respond. "How would you address the gaps created by the pandemic?" I know some of you spoke to this a little bit earlier, but someone's asking for a little more development on those responses. So how would you address the gaps that have been created or shown, right, illuminated by the pandemic? I see Ms. Melody. I see Ms. Sarah. Melody, Ms. Sarah. Anyone else want to weigh in on that one? Ms. Polly, Dr. Reich. Okay, so let's start with Ms. Melody.
All right. So we're very aware that there are going to be gaps, unfortunately, because nothing beats a teacher in a classroom standing in front of the students and students asking questions and the other students getting to hear those questions and then here the teacher's answer. There is nothing better than that. There are students who, who say that they like the virtual learning better. There are some students that maybe do better that way and the parents are there to reinforce that. But I think the majority of students really need the face-to-face. And so we've already been talking about what we can do for this summer. We know that we're going to have to do remediation. We're, we're just, we're going to have to to try and catch the students up. We don't know that we can get them all the way to where they need to be, but we're going to try and get them as close as we can. So we're going to be offering several types of summer programs. Some that may be for three weeks, some for six weeks, maybe some for a little bit longer. But we're going to try and, and tailor our programs to meet all the different needs of students.
Thank you, Ms. Melody. Next up on that question for one minute this round is Ms. Sarah.
So this is something that I work on each and every day as a literacy coach. We look at the standards, not only for the whole grade level, but for the grade level and the pacing guide from March on. And what we do and what we've been very intentional about as a curriculum department is we're taking the standards that students missed during the spring shutdown and we're folding it in where it's most appropriate in the following grade levels pacing. So for example, you know, second grade literacy, we're taking that reading and writing, you know, group of standards that the last year's second grade cohort missed. And we're weaving it in to the third grade curriculum. I think that that's something that we definitely need to be intentional about and have our curriculum and instruction professionals work on. I also think we need to mind the social gap as well and make sure we're teaching social emotional pieces within our class, our daily classroom routines, too.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Next up on that one is Ms. Polly.
Well, thank you. I believe that as a board member, or board members, we have got to trust our AISD experts on how to address this. They are working very hard to come up with solutions and ideas. I would hope that when we see these plans, that they address the whole child. There's fun activities for summer school. There's physicality to it. There's small classes. There's more time, more tutors. You know, that we meet the kids where they are and so forth. But as a board member, I do not direct the curriculum. I only listen to what our experts tell us that we need to do and make sure that when I vote for it, it's the right thing.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. And then last on this one, we have Dr. Rensh.
Thank you. I, I agree with everything that's already been stated. I, I would underscore the, the whole child. As was stated, we have got to and are putting lots of resources into counseling, into that social and mental health. Not just of the students, which possible for the families, for our staff, for our teachers. We can have all the best tools that we can create from an academic standpoint. But if something's not right and that little child's home, they're not going to learn. It's just not going to happen. We've got to take care of them. They have been doing things to survive, to get through a pandemic. And we have to address that to me first and foremost, before we start saying, how can we get, catch up with the COVID slide?
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Reich. So and, and I will say, as, as you've noticed, I take a few liberties as moderator. I, I will say also that as an educator, it's important that, for me, I feel like as a, as a nation, we need to reevaluate that idea of success, right? Because we've tied success to these arbitrary numbers and ages and where there's already not enough time for what was normally being taught. Now we're cramming in more and thinking we're going to win. And what we'll really do is widen this achievement gap and widen the inequities as opposed to really thinking about what makes sense for students. But we first got to tear down that arbitrary structure of what success is and turn it into success as learning as opposed to success as aging. But that's just my two cents on the matter. We're going to move on to some more technical questions, get you out of that hot seat and put you in a different one. Again, one minute on these questions. So this question is about MWBE. So we had a conversation earlier, a couple of you mentioned the idea of the strategic plan and wanting to have more MWBE participation. So this question is really about creating policy number one, because we know that where it may be intentional in your heart, it is not on paper as a policy for intentionality and culture when it comes to hiring MWBE companies. And also the intentionality within that marker. So MWBE is a wide spectrum, but what we find is what we see most is really just white woman-owned businesses. And so businesses owned by people of color don't get the same opportunities. But they get lumped into this number that looks like success when it isn't. So the question is, what are your thoughts on an MWBE policy? And are you willing to push for such a policy to be created? Who wants to answer that question? I've got Ms. Polly. I got Dr. Reich. Where are you? There you are. I got Mr. Weber. Where are you? Right there. All right. Well, we'll start with Ms. Polly. I got you, Ms. Sarah.
Thank you. I'm on the governance committee, which deals with policies and updates and that sort of thing. And as Dr. Reich earlier sta- stated, this was something that was new to the board when he first came on the board, before I came on the board. And those policies have been, have been written there, passed and, and in the policy book. So I, I, maybe I'm missing the point of the question. I think in our strategic plan, we can certainly reiterate our support for using minority businesses and our, with our contracting. But the policies are there.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. Next on that one was Dr. Reich.
Thank you. So a- as I mentioned before, regarding MWBE Hub and, and the scoring matrices that are now employed, I, I mentioned that we're, the district has done the, the data to show that we're about 20%. They, for fear of failure, did not want to put a number in a policy, much to my chagrin that I was pushing for behind the scenes. I can tell you, we're real close at a minimum to an aspirational goal or a specific goal because they feel comfortable enough now that they've got the systems in place. And in addition to that, they have hired a consultant specifically to address MWBE and Hub policy and shortcomings. And what can we do to increase that? So absolutely support those level of specificities to include in our policy. And I guarantee they're coming real soon.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Next up on that one is Mr. Weber.
Well, I agree with you that the white women have definitely dominated that number. So to some degree, I don't think the whole policy is working just by the definition that has occurred. Now, I personally am not a big fan because what happens is a developer, a contractor will raise his price. Let's use 10%, just because he has to work with different companies he's not used to. So what happens is you turn a $10 million project into an $11 million project. The Board of Trustees is supposed to be watching that for the tax, out for the taxpayer, making sure we're getting the best value for the dollar. And personally, I don't think that happens under those policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. And next up is Ms. Sarah.
So I have the same stance as Ms. Walton on this. And I do want to note that it's really important, too, that we're looking at what attracts, you know, several populations to certain professions. You know, one really good example is, you know, my husband, he's a professor at the UTA College of Engineering. And, you know, they are constantly trying to work with organizations and, and, you know, get on the camp, K through 12 campuses to try to attract more women and minorities in STEM. And so we need to make sure that we're getting to the root of the problem, which is really attracting, you know, more of a diverse pool to these professions.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. And we're going to move to the last question now and then prepare for your one-minute final remarks. So
You left me out.
You didn't have your hand up. I missed your hand.
Yes.
Oh, no.
No, 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 you're fine.
Okay, so we had started. That one's not my fault then. That one's
No, let me jump in.
Go ahead, Ms. Melody.
All right. So we do, as, as I believe Erin and Polly have said, we do have a policy. But I think we can do a better job of recruiting and attracting those, those businesses that are run by women and minorities. We have the consultant and I think that is a step in the right direction. It's certainly better than what we had four, five, 10 years ago. But I do think we need to do a better job of attracting and recruiting those businesses.
Thank you, Ms. Melody. And I'm going to let you go first on this next one. So this next question is the last question before final remarks. And the question is, what does a job well done look like? So at the end of your tenure as a school board member, what will a job well done look like? And we're going to start with Ms. Melody.
All right. So a job well done to me will be when we have established equity. When all students in our district feel like that they have had access to the same opportunities. That we do see our students are well-prepared for college or a career or even the military. And to me, a job well done will be when And to me, a job well done will be when we have provided those opportunities for our students. If our, and that our students feel like they have received a good education that has better prepared them for life after school. So to me, it's about, it's about equity and providing those opportunities for schools. To me, that will, that will make me feel like I've done a job well done, that I did everything I could to prepare the students.
Thank you, Ms. Melody. We're gonna go to Ms. Daphne next.
A job well done to me is that we have addressed, uh, the culture in the classrooms. We have also addressed the, the moment I had it written down. Sorry. We have addressed the culture, education justice, and culture bi- bias has been addressed. That's a job well done to, for me. That's the way to look for me.
Thank you, Ms. Daphne. We're gonna go to Ms. Sarah.
A job well done to me, um, looks like happy, healthy, well-connected kids, um, who love each other, love their world, and they are ready for adulthood. And they are ready to, you know, make the world a better place than it was before them. And, um, that drives everything that I do as an educator and a mother. Um, and it's not something I can accomplish by myself. We have to work together as a team.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. We'll go to Mr. Weber.
A job well done to me will be that the school board is listening to the citizens. And our job as the school board is to provide the best quality education for the students that, that the taxpayers are paying for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. We're gonna go to Ms. Polly.
Well, I guess maybe I'm just kind of a realist. We've talked about a lot of ideology. But, uh, there's really only three things that's, that as school board members we can do. And that is hire a superintendent, uh, approve policies and prepare the budget or approve the budget a- after it's once prepared. So, yeah, a job well done is that we have a school district that is running very well with good leadership, with good financial responsibilities, and with policies that address all of these needs that we've been talking about specifically, uh, of course, equity tonight. So that's what I would think, uh, would be the sign of a job well done.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. And next is Dr. Reich.
Thank you. I'll just say what everybody else said. Uh, how, how's that? Um, and, and I'm, I'm partly serious with that. Uh, e- except that we, we have to, at the end of the day, for me to feel like my little part in something that is so much bigger for me paid off is all kids cross that stage. And they cross it with pride. They cross it with opportunity that we have helped develop for them. They cross it becoming great adults, great community, contributing citizens, which is what we need for our healthy community, for our healthy economy in our community. And all of the, the strategic planning and the policies and the advocacy and everything else that goes into it, that is what it looks like at the end of the day to me.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. All right, we are going to go with last remarks. You will have one minute to give your last and final remarks. And then the next voice you will hear will be that of our illustrious president, um, is Elisa Simmons to give the final word for the evening. So before we do that, I wanna say thank you so much for granting us a little bit of your time this evening and sharing your thoughts and passions with us. It was really awesome to get to know you and to learn more about what you stand for and how you will represent the community that we live and serve in. So thank you so much for that. So we're gonna do final remarks. And I, since this happened to you twice, Ms. Melody, I'm gonna give you the right of refusal. Do you want first or last on last remarks? You want first? All right. So we're gonna start with Ms. Melody. We're gonna move to, um, Ms. Polly. Then we'll go to Dr. Reich. We'll go to Mr. Weber. We'll go to Ms. Daphne. And then we'll go to Ms. Sarah. And then Elisa Simmons will be before you. So, starting with Ms. Melody.
Thank you, Ms. Tia. Um, I just wanna thank everyone for this opportunity to come and visit with you. And I, I was really proud of the questions that were, uh, asked of us tonight. I think they're, they're very thought-provoking. And I think probably these questions are something at least that I will continue to think about even after this evening. So I'm, I'm really pleased at the questions. I think they were, uh, very provoking and deep. And I just appreciate the questions. And I would appreciate your support. I feel like I've worked hard these last three years and I would like three more years to continue the work. So thank you so much for this evening.
Go ahead. Who's ever next?
Is that me or, I believe? Well, I, I'd also want to thank, uh, this, your group for having us tonight. Uh, I have been trying to learn about equity, uh, and the issues that involves a little more in-depth. And I certainly am spurred on by the questions tonight to do some more of that and to do some more listening. Uh, I, uh, just want to say that I would appreciate everyone's vote for me for, uh, place one on the school board. I would like to return. I feel like we still have a lot of work to do. Um, we've been working together very well as a team. Uh, we've been clo- become closer, I think, of the team of eight uh, this past year, just because of the adverse circumstances we were in. And, uh, I just would end by saying that I, um, this is not the time to change leadership, so I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Was Mr. Weber next?
Um, I would appreciate everyone's vote on, on May 1st. I, uh, I certainly feel that the school district has not done the citizens a favor by raising the tax rate. And I mean, we're in the middle of a pandemic and people have lost their jobs, trouble making rent payments and everything else. And I raised the tax rate to the highest MNO rate in Tarrant County. And I would appreciate your vote, May 1st, for district, for place three of the AISD. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Ms. Daphne?
Yes, thank you. I would like to leave with cash. K-A-S-H. K meaning kindness, being kind to one another. A meaning your attitude, that it just not addressing one set of people, but the entire district of students in the school district. S means sincerity, meaning that you are being, uh, sincere with your decisions. And H meaning humility. Cash are things that we have within us. And those are the things that we reflect and, and our students pick up on. And I would like to have your, um, uh, for, I, I wanna thank the NAACP for having us this evening. And I definitely would appreciate your endorsement. And I'm running for place number three for this Arlington Independent School District.
Thank you, Ms. Daphne. Ms. Sarah?
Right. Um, yes, thank you so much, NAACP, for hosting this awesome forum. Um, I've enjoyed every minute and, um, I've learned a lot as well. Um, and the questions have been very informative and thought-provoking. Um, I truly believe that we have a lot of room to grow, um, in our school district. And I'm personally committed and invested in the forward movement of our district. I care very much about this city. And, um, what, whatever happens with the election, I will continue to serve our community and advocate for our kids and teachers. Um, and I would love for you all, um, to go to www.sarahforaisd.com um, to learn more about why I'm the best candidate for place one. I'm also going to put my cell phone number in the chat. You guys can reach me anytime.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah and Dr. Reich.
Okay. Uh, sorry for my delay. I was trying to put in my web information into the chat, but my, it, it's just not working. I, I don't know why. Uh, www.voteerinreich.com. If you wanna learn more, if you wanna reach out to me, I'm, I'm always available. Uh, yeah, thank you for, for the opportunity. Thank you for the questions. Uh, I have been, I have been a champion for doing everything for all students in Arlington, for making sure that we are, as trustees, for me as an individual, being that representative conduit between the community's expectations and the school district. And I do not want to stop that. I, uh, in this age of the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic, experience matters. Uh, I've heard things about, uh, that there's a perception, uh, of a disconnect. Uh, well, okay, let's talk about that. Please reach out to me. If, if, the perception, as they say, is reality. So have a conversation, reach out to me. That is where it all begins. Communication, communication, communication. Otherwise, we get nowhere. Uh, May 1st, April 19th through the 27th, early voting. Erin Reich, place three. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. And now, um, I will leave it to Madam, uh, President and/or our political action chair, Mr. Damon Gardner, to give final words. Will it be both of you?
I'm deferring to Mr. Chair.
Damon, you wanna go first and then?
Okay, listen, Madam President has anything to follow up with. I wanna thank all of the candidates for participation in coming out. Uh, this evening, even though you're at home, it's still raining outside. And I want to thank my committee for helping me put this whole event together. And I want y'all to be prepared to look out for our next candidate event will be next Monday, March the 29th, where we will do the Arlington, uh, City Council, uh, candidate forum. And if you're looking for membership, the NAACP's website is arlingtontechnap.org. We're looking for membership in, uh, in the political action team. And I believe Tia put her information for the, uh, education committee. And we have all types of committees that we're looking for memberships and we're looking to put people to work. And I'll see our Candace also put in there contact information to the chat. And Madam President can, uh, fill in a, but leave a section will be recorded. And once it's finalized, we will be posting it on our website. And if I haven't forgotten anything, uh, I'll put it in the hands of Madam Thursday if she has anything before we close.
Nothing more. Thank you, Damon. And thank you to the committee for all of your work, uh, to put this on. And thank you to the candidates. Good luck to you all. Good night.